Good evening. I'd like to call to order the council meeting for January 9.
Okay. Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Cost?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson? Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Councilmembers Spitzley? Councilmember Spatafor. There are eight members present in the quorum, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Do we have anyone that would like someone remembered at this time? Seeing none, then we will please rise. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the council proceedings of January 3.
Vice President Garza?
Thank you, Council President. I move the minutes as written for January 3 of 2022.
All right. 2023, yes. We have a motion before us. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies and presentations. We have a first tribute in recognition of the Greater Lansing Area Holiday Commission, Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration.
Thank you. And if those that are here for that celebration, if you could come down into the well, we have Vice President Garza and the mayor that will be making presentations.
Thank you, Council President.
You'll go down.
Right now?
Yep.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
So I just want to give a brief synopsis of the great work you guys do here. The Lansing, Michigan Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commission of Mid-Michigan has won an Emmy Award for the broadcast of its 2021 MLK Day of celebration honoring Dr. King's legacy. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commission of Mid-Michigan works to support equality, diversity, and social justice. It focuses on the area's pressing issues of literacy, youth violence, hunger, mentoring, education, and community enrichment. The nonprofit organization hosts speakers in concerts, supports community service agencies, and promotes youth initiatives such as essay and art contests, college scholarships, and annual Y Achievers Tour for high school students. Got a beautiful tribute here for you guys. I appreciate all the good work you're doing for our community, and I encourage you guys to keep going. Thank you. With that, I'd like to...
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have a motion before us to pass the tribute. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed. Passes unanimously. Mayor, I'm sure you'd like to say a few words.
Say a few words. It's hard to, it's always hard to follow. Thank you, councilman. Thank you, everybody, for being here today. I know I am really looking forward to Monday. Every year, we have the nation's best MLK commission with some of the hardest workers. It's nice to be back in person, so it'll be good to see you all. I also do have a tribute on behalf of the city. Of course, mine is not here because it's going to be presented, and it's in your, the booklet that we're going to have, so I thank you for that. But I want to thank you for all the hard work. I want to thank you for everything that you do for our city. Again, this is something that we look forward to every year, that I know I look forward to every year. And when we talk about boards, this is the hardest working board that I know. So, thank you. And in the tribute, as you all know, I will declare Monday as MLK Day right here in the city of Lansing. So congratulations.
And I'm sure we have someone from the commission that would like to say a few words.
Thank you, President Wood, and certainly Vice President Garza, and to the mayor. Thank you to this august body behind me, and to all of the city of Lansing residents of Lansing and East Lansing and the Mid-Michigan area. We are proud to be back at the Lansing Center in person for our 38th Annual Luncheon, the oldest luncheon in the country, longest-serving, largest in the nation. So we are very proud of that. Our speaker is attorney Fred Gray, civil rights attorney. He was, he is notably, not only for civil rights, but also for his work with Dr. King as his first civil rights attorney during the civil rights era. So we're proud to recognize him during this luncheon. And also, I would like to introduce you to these hard-working people behind me. I do stand in this honor for our Chair Elaine Hardy, and also our Vice Chair Tristan Wright-Meyer, our Secretary Kelly Ellsworth-Etchison, our Treasurer Steve Japinga, Lonnie Lee, Kristen Shelley, Anthony Winston, and Bob Hoffman, who stand behind me today. We do have some commissioners missing, but we certainly want to recognize them as well for their hard work. But again, to the city, to this council, thank you so much for partnering with us and making this a great event, not only for Mid-Michigan, but for the state of Michigan.
You are.
Oh, I'm Tony Baltimore. Thanks. Sorry about that. Thank you. Thank you again.
Tony, just quickly, are there tickets still available?
There are not.
Okay. So that, as usual, were sold out, so we appreciate that.
As usual, we are sold out, but doors, for those who do have tickets, doors open at 10:00, and the event will start promptly at 11:00.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming down this evening. Thank you. Do you need it?
All right. Our next special ceremony is the 2023 City Council Assignments by Council President Wood.
Thank you, City Clerk. I will read into the record the assignments for the committees for the 2023 council. First is the Committee of Public Safety. Adam Hussein will chair. Carol Wood is Vice Chair, and Ryan Koss is a member. Our Committee on Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, Jeremy Garza is Chair, Patricia Spitzley is Vice Chair, and Jeffrey Brown is a member. The Personnel Committee, Jeremy Garza is Chair, Carol Wood is Vice Chair, Peter Spatafor is a member, and Brian Jackson is a member. To the Committee of City Operations, Peter Spatafor is Chair, Adam Hussein is Vice Chair, and Ryan Koss is a member. The Planning and Development, the Committee of Development and Planning, Patricia Spitzley is Chair, Jeffrey Brown is Vice Chair, and Jeremy Garza is a member. The Ways and Means Committee, Peter Spatafor is Chair, Carol Wood is Vice Chair, and Brian Jackson is a member. And the Ad Hoc on Homelessness and Solutions, Jeffrey Brown is Chair, Adam Hussein is Vice Chair, and Patricia Spitzley is a member. These will be posted on our website along with The Times for these committee meetings. Also, we do have our 2023 council member boards and committees and assignments, and those will be on the website as well. Thank you. Yes, we can do that.
We do have some people being appointed to boards and commissions that are here tonight, and we're going to bring those forward at a special ceremony so that they can take their oath of office and then decide whether they want to stay or go home. I know we have Agenda Item Number Nine, the appointment of Eric Sudol to the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority Board.
Okay, if we could have Vice President Garza, we had moved this in Committee of the Whole, if you could read this resolution, the appointment?
Thank you, Council President. So this is the appointment of Eric Sudol as an at-large member of the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority Board of Commissioners for a term to expire June 30 of 2025. Eric, if you'd like to come down to the well?
And with that, we have a motion before us. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed. Passes unanimously. And Chris will swear you in.
Right up at the mic, so folks can hear you at home.
Sorry.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of...
Of the Office of?
Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority Board Member.
That, that, yes. Lefah. I will, yes.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sign both copies of that. And I know we also have Robert Benstein here, who is being appointed to the Lansing Gateway Corridor Improvement Authority Board of Directors.
And that is on our agenda, is number 17, and Councilmember, or Vice President Garza?
Thank you, Council President. So this is the appointment of Robert Benstein as an at-large member of the Lansing Gateway Corridor Improvement Authority Board of Directors, term to expire June 30 of 2026.
We have a motion before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed. Passes unanimously.
So if you could repeat after me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Lansing Gateway Corridor Improvement Authority Board of Directors.
The Office of the Lansing Gateway Improvement Corridor Board of Directors.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if we have Jared LaRue is here. Okay. Jared LaRue, item number 14.
Thank you, and we will turn to Councilmember Brown for that appointment. Councilmember Brown?
Well, thank you. This is for the appointment for Jared LaRue as the second ward member of the Board of Fire Commissioners for a term to expire June 30 of 2026. Mr. LaRue has served as a fighter-fighter for nearly 14 years and came to the committee where we took action for that, so I'd make a motion to approve his appointment.
All right. We have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed. Passes unanimously. And I see you brought your family with you. If you'd like some of them to come down with you into the well, they're more than welcome to do that when you're being sworn in.
You got to see how it's done.
I did.
If you raise your right hand, repeat after me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I'm sorry.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Board of Fire Commissioners Member.
Of Office of Board of Fire Commissioners Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
All right, congratulations. And do we have, both for the same board, Emily Saroch and Raquel Sparkman? They're all here tonight. Yay, okay.
Councilmember Jackson? You have Emily and Raquel. 15 and 16.
Thank you. I would like to move the appointment of Ms. Emily Saroch? Sarochi. As an at-large member of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Board for a term to expire June 30, 2026. Ms. Sarochi came to our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee meeting last year, and I almost forgot about it, and she is representing an at-large member. And I am so sorry that I forgot my notes, but we vetted her, and she was very qualified and very interested, and I would move her appointment.
We have a motion to move the appointment. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed. Passes unanimously. You've seen how it's been done, so if you can come on down.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Board Member.
Of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion.
Advisory Board Member.
Advisory Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Jackson, your next appointment?
Thank you. I've moved the appointment of Raquel Sparkman as the third ward member of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Board for a term to expire June 30, 2023.
We have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed. Passes unanimously. And if you would please come into the well, we'll be glad to get you sworn in.
I haven't ever done so much swearing in my life. If you could raise your right hand, repeat after me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of...
Of the Office of?
Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Board Member.
Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Go to the council member comments.
I'm gonna hold for just a second here. I need to check on something. We were looking at the dates for the two appointments that we just did for the at-large. One is showing June 30, 2026, and the other is showing June 30, 2023. Are those correct?
They staggered.
It's a new commission, so they staggered somewhere.
Okay. All right. Just, it was just pointed out to me, so I just wanted to make sure. All right.
Now, back to the regular order. We are to comments by councilmembers and the City Clerk.
Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. Just a few things. First, I want to announce our Fourth Ward Constituent Contact Meeting every fourth Saturday at Gregory's, which is 2510 North Martin Luther King. I'll be there with anybody who wants to talk about the Fourth Ward or the city of Lansing. It'll start at 10:00, and it will repeat every month on the fourth Saturday. And also, I just wanted to make a comment on the recently read committee assignments, and I just want to place an objection on the record. I noticed first that I was only put on one and a half committee, if you count personnel, but personnel only deals with the hiring and firing of the city council staff. So essentially, one committee, and I noticed that I was the person with the least amount. So I requested by, to our president, to be added to either Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion or Ad Hoc Housing on Homelessness to be a mere member, but her discretion rules as president, and I was denied. So I'm on one committee, and I just wanted to place that on the record. That's an objection, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Hussein?
Sure. First thing I want to announce is, and I actually announced this last Monday, that the Southwest Action Group meeting, although they typically meet on the first Tuesday of each month because of the holiday, and because we actually had a city council meeting last Tuesday, they actually moved their meeting to tomorrow. So January 10, 6:00 PM, Southwest Action Group will be meeting at 2101 West Holmes, which is the South Side Community Coalition Center. And so if you are, again, familiar with their work and you want to be part of that work, we certainly would love for you to attend. Also, we will have our next Southwest Lansing Constituent Contact Meeting this Saturday, January 14, beginning at 10:00 AM, and that will take place at 5825 Wise Road, which is the location for the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center. We will be meeting in the Sandy Allen Room. My understanding, and I'm sure the mayor will speak to this, is that the participatory budget meeting, sorry, that was scheduled for that day to take place at Tabernacle of David, has actually been relocated to the Sandy Allen Room in the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center. Our hope is to create some measure of synergy, so we're hoping that, you know, some of my folks that typically come out will come out just a little bit early to be part of that discussion, and then some of the folks that are part of that discussion will stay to take place, I'm sorry, to take part in our constituent contact meeting. We will have both Representative Cara Hope, as well as Senator, I think for the first time, I'm saying Senator, not Senator-elect, Senator Anthony, Sarah Anthony, will both be on hand to provide some legislative updates and also to engage us in conversations in terms of what is important, particularly in South Lansing, for them to address as legislators in the new year. So we hope that you can make that. And then lastly, I'd like to wish Councilmember Brown a very happy birthday.
Did you have the announcement for RSL?
I can, I can announce that, sure. So Rejuvenating South Lansing will meet again, and I didn't have that ready to go, but I believe it's January 24, which is the fourth Tuesday of the month. That will take place also at 5825 Wise Road, which is the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center. And they also will be meeting in that, in that same room, the Sandy Allen Room, which is right off the parking lot, incredibly accessible. This, yup, at 6:30 PM, sorry. This particular meeting, if folks recall prior to the pandemic, typically what would happen is there would be a power meeting that would follow kind of an informational meeting. So it would start at 6:30, typically end at about 8:30. We typically have speakers from really across the community engage us, and then we talk city council issues, South Lansing issues, and the like. For this first meeting, the idea is to get together and really prioritize. What are those things that, you know, we need to be addressing in South Lansing? Who are those folks we need to be addressing to make sure that we're problem-solving and implementing solutions? And so we really, really hope that, or I should say, RSL really hopes that folks get out and participate in that very important meeting. Again, January 24, 6:30 PM, at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other council comments? Seeing none?
Thank you, President Wood. I don't have any announcements, so I will go ahead and roll into the calling of the close of registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters tonight does include Items 4 on the agenda through Item 22. And so if you wish to address those items, please complete the blue form in the back in the next minute or so with Jason, and he'll get that to me. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, please jump up now and tell us, you have a minute, tell us the details of your event.
Hi, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Rebecca Kason. I'm the Executive Director of the Women's Center of Greater Lansing on Michigan Avenue. We actually have three events coming up, which is pretty exciting. On Wednesday at 5:00, we have our open house, so it's a great time to come out, meet our staff, meet our board, learn about all of our programs, and there will be some refreshments served. For those who did not get tickets to the luncheon on Monday, we do have a day of service in our office. We are repainting the space using the best research available about therapeutic colors and colors for healing, as well as on Wednesday, tickets are going live for our We Laugh fundraiser, which will be February 25 at Urban Beat. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community events? All right, seeing none, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor, sure.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wood. I have a few announcements. First, two exciting ones that I just found out about two hours ago. Michigan State University was awarded two grants in the federal appropriations bill that I wasn't aware of. They are giving $2.2 million for the Center for Development and Learning. So their College of Social Science is going to train childcare workers right here in Lansing. They're going to be doing this work here in our city. They expect to be about 150 slots to train, producing 20 to 22 or 23 new childcare workers each year. Again, located in Lansing, they're working on the space now, and they're expecting this to be, for these workers to come and work in the city of Lansing. So I think that will be huge for us, for childcare, for our workers. So I want to thank MSU for going out and getting that in the federal budget. They also were able to be appropriated $2 million for WKAR, which we know is very important in our community. So congratulations to President Woodruff and to the board, and thank you for doing that here in our city. We have, the neighborhood grants application is available online now. Organizations are encouraged to apply online, and the deadline to apply is March 3, so please pass that on to your neighborhood organizations. We've got a variety of efforts to help folks. There's a Coffee and Grants Chat that's on January 12 at Letts at 9:00 AM, where you can join the department director and their staff to talk all things neighborhood grants. And then the Neighborhood Advisory Board also meets Thursday, January 19, at 5:30 PM at Letts Community Center, and organizations are encouraged to attend and pitch their grant projects to the board. So that's exciting. Today, also until March 6, our facade grants are open. So businesses and others on our corridors are welcome to put in applications for our facade grants through our LEDC. This Friday at 11:30, our HRCS is doing a virtual MLK event, so check that out. The details, I believe, are on their website. I do not have the Zoom info here, but it is virtual. This Saturday at 9:00 AM, we are doing Breakfast and Budgets, and Councilman Hussein, who just left, he referenced that we were going to do that at the Schmidt Center, the Alfreda Schmidt Center, right before his constituent contact. I thought it was a great idea to have some synergy, and he and Delisa Fontaine worked it out that our Breakfast and Budgets will be Saturday at 9:00 AM, and then his constituent contact will be at 10:00, and folks can come and enjoy both. As you heard, the annual MLK event holiday luncheon is at the Lansing Center at 10:00 this Monday, starting at 11:00. That's what I heard them say, so I'm gonna believe them. And then finally, I want to congratulate Brett Koszinski, our Parks Director, who was named ELGL, which is the Engaging Local Government Leaders Network. He is one of their top 90 local government influencers for 2022, and they complimented his sincerity that he's principled and motivating. So I thought that was really cool for one of our staff, one of our directors, to be recognized as one of the top local government leaders in the country. That's what I've got. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you, and... Thank you, and, uh, we are to public comment on legislative matters, which, as I indicated, is items four through 22 on the agenda. Items four and five are public hearings related to 109 East Randolph Street.
Uh, Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So what we have before us is the 109 East Randolph Street rezoning from R-6A Urban Detached Residential to R-AR Residential Adaptive Reuse. Uh, is there anybody in the audience here to speak on that? Not seeing anybody? Okay, with that.
You wanted to do.
Okay, I do the other one. Okay. And so the other one, uh, number five on our agenda, it's a special land use, uh, 1-2022. This special land use permit at 109 East Randolph Street is for a 20-bed state-licensed adult foster care, large group home for the age. This is, uh, currently, uh, owned, or it used to be a, um, a convent for St. Charise, and so it's over on the north end of town off of Turner Street.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no one who completed a blue form, so we are to, uh, the referral of public hearing number four.
Uh, that will go back to development and planning.
And the referral of, uh, public hearing number five.
And that also will go back to development and planning.
All right, then we are to the consent agenda and items six and nine. We're already taken care of under special ceremonies, so we have seven and eight and 10 through 13.
All right, Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So I move the consent agenda with the following. Tribute in recognition of HRCS memorial observance, uh, the reappointment of Lori Ballmer as member of Michigan Avenue Corridor, uh, the easement for Consumers Energy, adding Van Overbeek, McCaw, and Timothy, Timoney, PC, and fellow law, and Winters and associates outside council to the approved list, Act 72022, the permanent easement, uh, the grant acceptance of $156,695.40 for the City of Lansing to acquire and demolish three residential homes in the floodplain as part of Lansing's ongoing mitigation measures to permanently reduce and eliminate the long-term risk to human life and property from flooding.
All right, we have the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we're to resolutions for action, and we've already done some of those items, so we are to item 18 of the Ad Hoc Committee on Homelessness and Solutions.
Um, I will pass the gavel.
Okay, I recognize President Wood.
Uh, before us is the resolution dealing with the Ad Hoc Committee on Homelessness and Solutions. This was a topic that came up, um, both during the Ad Hoc Committee on rental properties as well as, um, from the public. Uh, this, uh, committee, uh, Ad Hoc Committee will have a definite timeline. Um, they will be asked to report back out in September, um, to, um, the council, uh, so that any suggestions can be con- added into, um, the budget priorities. And with that, um, I would move the resolution.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Okay.
Okay, we have item, um, 19, the public hearing for 340 East Edgewood.
Uh, Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So what we have before us is a setting of public, setting a public hearing for special land use 2-2022, which is a special land use permit at 340 East Edgewood Boulevard for a self-storage rental facility. Now, this, uh, this came before the development and planning, uh, trying to think of the exact date, but this is scheduled for a public hearing for February 13th. Uh, this property is a former Sam's Club, and they are looking at, um, turning this into a self-storage facility and two suites for retail use as well. The parking lot, uh, would be reduced by 20% to convert green space, infrastructure space. I did ask the developer if there are any retail, if they have any, uh, any, uh, tenants, uh, already listed for the property, and they do not as of yet. Now, this is another storage, uh, self-storage unit that they're trying to build in South Lansing, which in my opinion, you know, we are saturated. I will let them, uh, speak, and, uh, we will set the public hearing for February 13th here at council.
Okay, we have a motion, um, before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of setting the public hearing for February 13th, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
Item 20, uh, Make Safe or Demolish for Seaway Drive.
Councilmember Brown.
Uh, thank you. Orders to make safe or demolish to the owners of the property located at 4580 Seaway. Uh, this has, um, had a public hearing on 12/12/2022. Committee took action on, uh, 12/15/2022. This is a fire damaged property. Uh, the value is estimated to be 1.409 million, and the estimated repairs $407,759.64. I move a resolution for, um, 30 days, make safe or demolish.
Okay, we have, uh, motion before us, and the pictures have been being shown on city TV. Are there, um, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
Item 21, uh, Bonds for Public Safety Facilities.
Uh, Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President Wood. So we have, uh, this is the approval to sell bonds for the public safety facilities approved by the voters. Now, the RFP went out in November of 20, uh, 28th of 2022 and was due back December 19th, 2022. The public safety millage will be on July's tax bill on 2023, uh, and the funds will be kept, uh, separate from, uh, to be accounted for.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
And, uh, final action, item 22, grant acceptance for the Ovation Center.
Councilmember Spataford.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the grant acceptance for the Michigan Strategic Funds $5 million. This was, uh, awarded, awarded to the City of Lansing by the Michigan Strategic Fund through Resolution 2022-188 on November 9th, 2022. The award must be expended by December of 2026, and all financing must be obtained within 18 months of the award date to receive, to fully spend the grant.
Okay, we have a motion before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow form in the back. We'll give you another minute or so to, uh, sign up with Jason. I do have a number of forms up here already. Um, and while folks are finishing signing up, we are to reports of officers, boards and commissions.
Uh, Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I move that all items be considered as being read in full, and that the proper referrals be made by the president.
You have a motion before us. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
We have from the clerk minutes of boards and commissions.
Uh, placed on file.
From the mayor, the appointment of Melissa Horst to the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board.
Uh, City Operations.
The appointment of Chaz Carrillo to the EDC, Tifa and LBRA Board.
Development and Planning.
Uh, the appointment of Prince Gerald Solis to the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board.
Equity, Diversity and Inclusion.
And Florencio Hernandez to the, uh, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board.
Uh, Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee.
Okay, we are to remarks by council members.
Are there any remarks by council members? I would just want to note for the record for our next committee of a whole meeting on the 23rd, we will be having the new Ingham County Prosecutor that will be here, and, uh, we'll have an opportunity, uh, to talk to him about his philosophy in that office. And also, uh, we have our external auditor, um, coming in, and we will be reviewing the, um, audit. Uh, for council members, in your, um, mailboxes, uh, is the, um, audit, so please make sure that you have that.
Okay, and with, we are, with that, we're to the mayor's remarks.
Mayor, sure. He has no comments.
Okay, public comments on city government-related matters. First, we have Nicholas Zandi, followed by Linda Keefe.
Thank you. Um, so, first again, well, um, my name is Nicholas Zandi. I'm from the Second Ward, and I'm a candidate for Lansing City Council. Um, I'm here, uh, representing, uh, Decentralized Lansing. Um, I am here to speak with, uh, several, uh, issues I have with the city. Uh, specifically, um, you all know my opinions on the at-large and why I, I think they need to be gotten rid of. I mean, uh, second, um, another problem is, um, that of urban planning. Um, one of the things that really pushed me over the edge and had me up to here with the Lansing City Council was that they pick, uh, and choose a lot of construction projects without looking into the records of the construction projects and how problematic they were, to say the least. And it really pushed me over the edge. It's like, why aren't you looking into people's records before you actually vote on getting construction projects? And I'm going to tell this, quality is better than quantity, I'll tell you that much. Uh, people deserve more quality housing than more housing, because a lot of the new housing projects I've seen around my neighborhood are just limited to small houses meant to fill in space without actually considering larger spaces that could fit more families. So that's one, another major problem I have. Um, another problem is that because, um, half the at-large council members live in Ward Four, they tend to hog it up on all the construction projects most of the time. As I've seen through, uh, Moore's River, which is where a lot of council members tend to live, um, a lot of that area tends to be more well-kept, and I guess you could say has higher standards and higher costs of living. They tend to get more representation, while we here in Old Everett and in other neighborhoods just don't. And a lot of, uh, neighborhoods on the South Side, uh, just don't have any neighborhood associations, and also neighborhoods is hilariously underfunded. We seriously need to make several changes, which is why I, one of the reasons I decided to run in the first place, and why I decided to form Decentralized Lansing as well. That is really all I really need to say, and I will yield the last 30 seconds of my time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Linda Keefe, followed by Carl Tealkeen.
Hello, everyone. I am here to address a, a potential, uh, City of Lansing ordinance that has been, uh, sent to Board of Water and Light November 8th. This would allow, um, the Board of Water and Light to have liens on families' homes here in Lansing. Uh, the problem with the lien is the families, and there are 17,000 families, by the way, according to Lansing State Journal, in any given year that have a, that suffer a shut-off. It's about one in every six people in the city. Um, according to, uh, Yolanda, uh, Bennett Board of Water and Light, uh, the city charter, um, it, well, allows Board of Light, Board of Water and Light to request that the city council by ordinance, um, collect unpaid charges for Board of Water and Light electric services and enforce liens upon the family's properties. Um, the, as I mentioned, Board of Water and Light has the draft ordinance. They've added, um, uh, well, would amend the Lansing Codified Ordinance, Ordinance as Chapter 1050, adding sections 1050.02 to 1050.10, uh, creating a lien process for, uh, collecting, uh, to link, uh, Board of Water and Light charges. Um, according to this chapter, 1050.03, it also says, and this is just a piece of it, "Such liens shall become effective immediately upon the distribution or supplying of such electric services or services to such premises." So does everyone's property automatically get, get on a, on a lien, and then it, and then it, whatever, I'll need the attorney's help here for the language, and then it just gets enacted. It, it just gets processed. Um, if this comes to fruition, I've seen more families put out of their homes, low-income families, seniors. It would, it, um, affect black families adversely at higher levels. Um, there'd be more homeless and, and more, more frankly, for the Ad Hoc Committee on Homelessness, um, to deal with. There'd be more students in our schools that are homeless. Um, according to Harvard's Civil Rights, Civil Liberties Law Review, losing one's home is not the only possible consequence of failure, uh, to pay your, um, electric bill. It can impact one's health, um, custody of children, and in severe cases, one's freedom. Um, I'd like to offer an alternative, which Consumers Energy currently has a pilot. It's the Percentage of Income Payment Plan.
Thank you very much.
You're, thank you, and I have to say.
Thank you.
When I heard that you're on one committee, I'll.
Thank you. Our next.
I, I heard you, Chris.
Thank you.
My chest tightened up, and I only get that from, because when I run, I have exercise-induced ch- exercise-induced asthma. I had that 30 minutes from the other guy tonight.
No, you did not, ma'am. You have, your time is up. Thank you very much. And the next speaker is Carl Tealkeen, followed by Mike Olson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Carl Tealkeen, uh, 1835 Fletcher here in Lansing. I'm here to talk about the homelessness issue. I would like to address, um, to the Ad Hoc Committee specifically. I'd be willing to work with anyone on that committee to be able to help out. I believe I have a unique perspective on being homeless, because I was homeless here in the city for over seven and a half months. I've also worked in the homeless shelters to assist those that are homeless. Um, I don't know, did everyone get my one-page proposal? Thank you, I'm hoping. I hope I addressed that appropriately with you folks, but I would like to be able to ask if it's possible to be scheduled for the committee of the whole to be able to give you a full presentation with all the numbers and all the details ready to go. But I believe my unique perspective is building tiny houses in a tiny house community could be able to alleviate this problem. Um, I'm already currently worked on two other communities of tiny house communities in other states, because there was an opportunity for me to be able to address this with them. I found out many times that those tiny house communities not only rose property values of the properties around them, but they also asked for inclusionary projects with their neighbors. Their neighbors loved to have them. I've talked with the chief police, chief of fire departments around those communities specifically, and they said that they've had nothing but good things to say about them. Neighborhood and Planning Committee I am working with here in Lansing right now, I'm working with Andrew, and he has been able to be a, a good font of information. I went to one of their meetings, and I was able to address this to those members. And I was able to touch them on, and they said that I should address this body to let you know that I actually have a good plan, but I'd like to be able to present that if I could, you know, full dissertation to give you all the facts, figures, numbers, and the individuals I've collected together to help me, from LCC's, uh, Department Chair of Construction Trades, to the regional managers of Lowe's, Home Depot, and of Menards. I've talked with these folks. They're willing to give material to us to be able to do this. I've also talked to veterans, those that are in recovery, and those that are out here on our streets. They're all behind me, wanting me to be able to do this project. Ladies and gentlemen, I really believe, and I feel, that I actually have a different take on being able to cure this problem. If, there are some that cannot live in tiny houses, that much I know and I've seen. There is an assessment that I was dreaming up and being able to talk with those in mental health through the military to be able to screen our own veterans for this. I believe I actually have a working knowledge and a working plan that I was approved from the Battle Creek VA to be able to put it on their property. If they're willing to trust me, are you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And, uh, next we have Mike Olson, followed by John Moran, and I will indicate Mr. Olson, um, he could have signed up on the blue. He's, uh, with the self-storage and provided some written materials that I'll make sure is scanned to the council. scanned to the council.
Yeah, I apologize. I just figured out that I should have been on that blue slip, so. Appreciate your time this evening. I more or less just wanted to introduce myself. Mike Olson with Devon Self-Storage. We represent the buyers that are trying to buy the property on 340 East Boulevard, the old Sam's Club. We are, we've been kind of going through the process with the city and look forward to the conversation that we're going to have with you on the 13th. We, we've been trying to find common ground with, we've had, we've had both opposition and in favor of us being there. We've had some local neighbors that have showed some concerns with us coming, and we've, we're trying and we're open to, and hopefully you'll get a good sense that we want to be good neighbors. And we're trying to find common ground that way so we can build our facility there. Having said that, we also know that there's other neighbors that are definitely for it and local businesses right next door that are definitely for us going there. And to just give you a small background on who we are, we're based out of Emoryville. We've got about seven facilities in the state of Michigan, four of them in Grand Rapids, two in Holland, and one in Jensen, and we're currently trying to build one in Warren and Southfield, and hopefully here in Lansing. We're a company that's well-experienced in the self-storage industry. I know it was mentioned that it's heavily saturated in self-storage. I would respectfully disagree. Part of our analysis, when we go to look to purchase a building, and this is right around $6 million, that we're looking to purchase the building plus the construction costs. I call it the white car effect. If you go shopping for a car and your car is white, it seems like that's all you notice. But when we go into our analysis, we look at the population and the square footage in the market, and this is, puts it about a six, where national average is about a 10. So it's definitely underserved, and that's why we're pursuing this. We're fully funded, so it's not something that we're going to start and not finish. It's usually on a 12-month time period that we look to get our start and finish with our construction. And it's not a typical self-storage facility that you may or may not think of. It's a real Class A facility. It's where you'll be able to drive your vehicle into the building totally out of the weather. It'll be completely climate-controlled. It'll be first-class security and facilities that are offered to the public. So look forward to our conversation. More or less, just wanted to introduce myself and, and look forward to trying to find some common ground and a pathway forward, so, thank you.
Thank you. We have John Moran, followed by Darren Thalen.
Hello. Brought some show and tell today. This is a screenshot I took off of a video from a body cam from 12/19/2018 as people were trying to break into my garage again. It was a bad year, so many losses, I couldn't even count. So many attempts, I couldn't even count. It got so bad that I set up yard alarms and cameras, and on this night, when it went off at 3:00 in the morning, we called 911. Ended up calling 911 three times over the course of about 20 minutes, telling them, "All you got to do is block the alley. The vehicle's in the alley. The bad guys are in the alley." This guy was a lookout a block away. Instead, they drove by the alley, hit the alley with their searchlight to let them know that they were there, and then drove around the corner on the Foster, seen a guy walking, and decided to confront him. He happened to be a lookout that I picked up on my camera system also. When they chased him, he threw his backpack over the fence. It had a Tech 9 with 22 in the magazine and one sideways in the chamber. It was good that they got a gun off the streets, but it'd been nicer if they got the gunman off the street, because he's just going to go out and get another gun. Did they take fingerprints? Did they do DNA? Did he even try to take this picture and clean it up better than my cheap printer could do and put it out there, circulate it, to find out who he is? Because he was connected with a large group that were doing a lot of break-ins in the neighborhood, hitting mine quite often. I lost a lot. Anyways, I've got this video along with my videos on a YouTube channel called Political Accountability in Lansing, Michigan. I hope everybody that's here will maybe look at it sometime and see how the police operate and what they did on this night and how they failed. It's political accountability, because you, Mayor, you're the one that, you're their boss. They only get away with this stuff because you let them get away with it. If you look at this, along with a lot of the other videos, and I've just begun, this is all on one playlist, and it's the only playlist I've got going so far, but I've got over 40 videos uploaded so far with a lot more to go. And by the time I'm done, I'll have everything in playlists, but it's probably going to take me a year or so, because I work 50, 60 hours every week. No chance of retiring. Too many losses. Too many losses, because in this case, like in other cases, the police allowed the bad guys to get away. They really did. All they had to do was block the alley. Of course, when I asked the officers about it afterwards, they said that 911 never mentioned the alley. So the question is, is who's lying? And I never got all the things I FOIA requested.
Thank you.
What are they covering up?
Thank you.
Can you tell me, please?
Thank you.
And finally, we have Darren Thalen, who appears to maybe have left us.
Okay.
That was our final speaker, then.
All right. For council members, I have the tickets for the luncheon, so if you want to grab them before you leave. With that, we are adjourned.